Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:33 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a full quorum of the commission as everyone is present. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Lopez leads us in the invocation.
Father, we pray that you might give us hearts of wisdom. We pray that we may always make wise choices. And when two paths seem to be equal, we pray you will help us to trust you even as we make our decisions. Give us hearts that are willing to obey you, to respond in faith to the wisdom you give us. Amen.
Amen.
Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 All right, moving on.
Okay, item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the commission may report any items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's announces. Mayor, would you have anything to disclose?
Just want to remind everyone that today is Juneteenth, and we can reflect on our history and how far we have come to remind everyone to continue to promote inclusivity and equality for all in all that we do within our community.
Item 3B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to disclose?
Yes, I would just like to let the commission know that in the past two days, we distributed 14,865 sandbags to the community, to Harlingen, bless you, to Harlingen residents, and that over the next few days, unless you have to travel somewhere, please stay home and don't be out driving in the streets. It could be rather dangerous. That's all I have.
Item 3C, city commission member announcements.
Well done, the Harlingen Police Department for their barbecue cook-off. Huge crowd, great participation, well done.
I want to thank Public Works for all the work that they've been doing to help us get the sandbags ready, using those vacuum trucks to clear things out, clearing out the canals, drainage canals. This was, we've been successful so far because of all the work you have all put in. But for everyone else, as we all remember, when the rain comes, soon after, the mosquitoes come. And that's what we're gonna have to worry about next. I've already talked to Josh about spraying, but as we go through these rainy days, if there's anything that's collecting water, any tires or anything like that, please dump them out, make sure they have no water, because that's where the mosquitoes will breed and then invade us all.
Amen. None, what others?
I'd just echo the mayor's announcement. Yesterday is Juneteenth. Also, Chief, that was a pretty good event. I was there for a few minutes in between appointments, issues I had going on at the same time. Thank you, and Public Works. Thank you, Chris, and your crew. Appreciate you guys, thank you, and ladies.
None, I'm good.
All right.
Moving on to item four, presentation of awards. Item 4A, presentation of certificate award to the Public Works Department by Texas Municipal League Human Resources.
Erica?
Yes.
She's hiding in the back.
There she is.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Commission. So today, we have TML here presenting an award to our Public Works Department, and we have Representative R. Consultant Johnny Vetta.
Thank you, Erica. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. I don't know if you remember me, I was here a couple of weeks ago, or not a week, a couple months ago. I told you I was gonna be back to present this award. I am thrilled to be here with you guys today because this award is a great accomplishment by the City of Harlingen and the Public Works Department within itself. Just to give you a little bit of a background on it, this is for our road-ready program, initiative that we kicked off about two years ago, to help make sure that anybody that works on or near the road stays safe out there and make sure that they go home at the end of day. So we provide a lot of education and a lot of safety tips within this program. Public Works City of Harlingen has been very engaged since the inception of it, and that's why I'm thrilled to be here. Along with the award, we actually give you an official letter thanking you guys for the partnership that we had, that we have, and the accomplishment that comes with it. And again, to give you a little bit of background on it, you guys are the only, like, the third state, I mean, third city in the state that's gotten this award so far. So it's a huge accomplishment. And again, I really do want to thank the Public Works, Chris, his support, Ruth, for this program, because it's not easy to get this. You have to go through what we call milestones. You have five digital badges that you'll see on the certificate, and you have to get awarded each one. You have to earn it until you get the fifth one, right? After that, you get the accomplishment. It's not just about the award, but what comes with it and the dedication that a department or a city has to put into to get this award. And that is why we highlight it in this particular way, because it really shows the commitment that you all have, and of course, with your support, the city for its staff to make sure that they're continuously developing everybody, make sure that they stay safe out there, and providing the resources that they need to make sure that they not only do their jobs with the equipment that we provide for them, but the education and the awareness that comes with it. So again, thank you for having me here, and it is a great pleasure for me to come and present this to you guys.
I would like to say just a few words. I promise I won't, I'm not gonna take long. So as Johnny mentioned, this is hard. Last year, I started working with Johnny, and I was able to get three badges for the city, right? It was really hard for me to get those last two, but I said, "Next year, we're gonna get it." Sure enough, you know, Ruth came on board, and I kind of tasked her with that, and she ran with it, right? And so this year, she was able to get us all five. But also, with the blessings of our HR director, we were able to implement a safety committee within Public Works. So we have a chair, a co-chair, which is Tanya and Danny, and I can tell you that Danny put up one of the hardest things to come up for this award. He actually came up with a rodeo equipment, which APWA, at the local level, listed us for that equipment. They liked it so much that they said, "We want to do that at the local level, to the state." And so Danny's gonna be assisting with that. And so it's just a team effort on everybody's part, right? Thank you for all your support, because without your support, we can't do that ourselves. So, thank you.
So before we take a picture with everyone, I just, you know, want to say how much we appreciate you, Chris, the whole Public Works team, the commission, I know. Every moment we have an opportunity, we love to brag on you, not because, just to do it, but because you deserve it. I have seen and witnessed a transformation in the Public Works Department since day one, from when I took office, and I know that responsibility and safety is priority from when Oscar was there to when you, you know, took over. We didn't skip a beat, and I think that that was such an excellent choice to have you as the Director of Public Works. You have, you're so passionate, the hard work that you do day in and day out, and you have the respect of your department, which is extremely difficult to do with such high numbers. I mean, you probably have the most employees within the city, at least, fall under Public Works, and knowing that they have you to advocate for them and all the hard work that you're doing, and I feel confident sitting here, knowing that we're prepared because of the hard work that you are doing. I see it, and we're doing our best to share our story with the Communications and Media Department so that the whole community knows, but know this, that we know, and we appreciate you. And I know Gabe feels the same way, because you make his job just a little easier, but thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. It makes me happy, and it just gives me peace to know that we have you and that you are protecting everybody out there. You're almost like, and not almost, you're like first responders in terms of being out there and on the front lines, helping people in times of, not just disaster, but what people, I don't think that they see, is that this has been like two years, from what I've seen, in the making of working really hard, and not just doing the work that you do out in the field, but also taking the time to do things like this that gives you the ability to stand out amongst the rest. And we know you get all these other accolades and awards for different individuals within your department, but, you know, it starts at the top, and so, Chris, you're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ready, one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three.
Nutrition?
Before we move on to the next proclamation, and then, of course, our Business of the Month that we're excited about, we do have our Pet of the Week, and there she is.
That's gorgeous.
I know.
She or he is a dalmatian, so that is a beautiful dog.
She's like sparking from the fire department.
Yes, and it was mentioned to me that we should have had the fire department here tonight with us as well, but, good evening, this is Ms. Penny. Penny is about three years old. She was turned in to us because there was a death in the family, and they just weren't able to continue to care for her and her two five-month-old puppies. So we do currently have all three, and they are available for adoption, and we would love to see people come into the shelter. We are open seven days a week, from 1:00 to 6:00 in the evening. Penny is housebroken. She will let you know when she has to go outside, and she will also let you know if there are strangers at the door. So she's not a huge barker, but if there's somebody there that shouldn't be there, she will let you know. So anybody who's interested is welcome to call the shelter or go in and visit her or her puppies.
She's adorable. I was like, Ms. Penny, look at that. Oh, she's gonna run the show. She's gonna run the meeting. Calista, can you grab a photo so you can share? And I didn't realize Ms. Penny had puppies.
Well, there's two, there's only two, and they're about five months old. So they are a little on the older side, but they are all available for adoption. And upon her adoption, and the puppies as well, they will be spayed, so we won't have any more Ms. Pennies.
Well, thank you. So for those that are watching at home, they can go to the shelter Monday through Sunday to adopt Ms. Penny or...
Or look at any of the other animals. There are plenty of animals there that are looking for their forever homes.
Thank you, thank you so much. Or anyone that's here, who wants to take Ms. Penny home. All right. Calista, what do you have next?
So next, we are proclaiming the month of June as Elder Abuse Prevention Month, and we have a proclamation, and so before, here to accept the proclamation is Monica Figaroa, Joe Cruz, and Marina Quezada. And before I invite them to come and accept the proclamation, I will read it, and it reads as follows. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the City of Harlingen, Texas by helping to preserve the customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. And whereas the abuse of elderly people or people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and in 2023, there were 120,069 completed cases of elderly and disabled person abuse in Texas, of which 83,737 were confirmed. And whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because of the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone or are usually ashamed and sometimes even afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods or in suburbia. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I now must approve of that. Mayor of the City of Harlingen do hereby proclaim the month of June as 2024 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. In Harlingen, Texas, we urge all citizens to work together to help reduce the abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. And so, Monica, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayors of Urdido and Commissioners. Let me first thank you for proclaiming June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Harlingen. In a society that values the just treatment of all people, Elder Abuse Awareness Month reminds us that elder abuse has implications for all of us, and so it's important to find the right solutions for it. Therefore, it is critical that we continue to raise awareness and take steps to prevent it in our communities. Educating the public on the issue, on what to do when they suspect abuse, neglect, and exploitation of an older adult or an individual with disabilities is crucial. The APS program will remain focused on raising awareness of elder abuse. On behalf of our program, I would like to thank all our first responders, all our judicial partners for their continued support in helping APS carry out their mission, which is to protect older adults and people with disabilities. It is through this collaboration that we are forming public and private partnerships to identify where stronger supports are needed and where existing connections must be reinforced as an essential first step toward defending our community against elder abuse. To report abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation, please call our hotline at 1-800-252-5400 or our website at www.txabushotline.org. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your leadership in helping us work towards addressing the under-reported issue of elder abuse. And I also wanted to thank you for the City of Harlingen and Public Works of Harlingen having those sandbags available for our elderly clients. I did notice it was one of the few cities in the valley that made them available for our elderly clients. Thank you.
Thank you for the vital work that you do for our community and the communities at large. We really appreciate all the hard work that you're putting in. Thank you.
Unfortunately, I've had some clients that have had to utilize the services, and it's very heartbreaking work. I tip my hat to you guys, because you guys see it all, the physical, financial, abuse, everything, so thank you so much, and we're a better community because you all are in it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so can we get a photo?
Ready, one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three. Ready, one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and...
They will travels.
Calista, tell us about our Business of the Month.
Okay, so next is our Business of the Month, which is an initiative that started last year in September to highlight local businesses and business owners that make great contributions to our community, and we've prepared a video for you to see before I tell you who that is.
So Mafi is a healthy place for people to come and enjoy healthy snacks, drinks, protein shakes. We have the acai bowls, the energy drinks, hydration drinks, cold-pressed juices. We have a little bit of everything. So whenever I moved here, I did quickly notice there was not many healthy options to get a snack or a full meal or anything like that. And then once COVID hit, I realized there really wasn't any options, and so one thing led to another, and God opened doors. Everything really just fell into place, and it has been a blessing and has been growing ever since. These are mostly all made from scratch. Our customers actually help us come up with our recipes. We have the ingredients, and then a lot of times, our customers will create something, and if it turns out to be good, then we add it to the menu. There's been times that we've had to downsize the menu because it gets a little too big, but it's fun because it helps our customers, you know, be involved with the business. So Mafi stands for Make Others Feel Important. So our goal is for our customers to feel better when they leave than when they came in. We try to greet everybody with a smile, with a hello. We like to make those personal connections rather than just an order. It's the most rewarding thing, I believe, you can do.
So as you guys can see, this Business of the Month is Mafi. The Communications Department recently moved downtown, and so me and Brandon have been taking a little bit more trips there than we need to be, and I could go on and on about how great this shop is, but I think the owner better come and tell you herself, though.
My name's Casey. I am the owner of Mafi Energy Bar. First, I just want to say thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so this is gonna be really short, but I think a lot of the gratitude goes to my team, for sure. They are the ones that are like the forefront and do anything and everything they can to make every person that comes in, you know, feel good and help them with whatever it is that they need help with, whether it's recommended in order or listening to their story or their problems or their anything they, you know, want to talk about. But, you know, we're grateful for this, and we hope to continue to serve Harlingen for many more years. So, thank you. This is Kayla. She's been with me since almost day one, so she's a little emotional.
Because she's the most, I can't even tell you how much I love this lady. She deserves this more than anyone, and I'm so proud of her, because she does a lot for people, and she's so giving and so hardworking, and you know, she doesn't get enough love. But yeah, I love her very much.
But we all love her, too.
Thank you all. Y'all are sweet.
And where are you located?
We are downtown Harlingen, on the corner of Commerce and Jackson. So right across the street from the...
The office.
The office, y'all's office.
Yes, so Mike is gonna be a new customer, I will tell you, because that's his jam right there, everything that you have.
Yes, there are a lot of city, people are very loyal customers.
A lot of the city employees, and I know that downtown staff and now Media Department will be included. And I will just say, Casey, you are adorable, you are a great speaker, and just feel confident in it, because you just, as soon as anybody walks into your store, everybody does feel happy. I learned something new. I didn't know what it stood for. I knew it was Mafi, but I didn't know, but it makes sense. I always wondered, like, where did the name come from? So I learned something today, but the girls are always happy, and you are so responsive. I know I'll message like, "Hey, can I do this?" or "Can I do that?", and you are really just, you know, you bring that small-town feel to your establishment, and having the little stools and things like that for people to kind of hang out. I am super excited to see your continued growth. I know you guys are gonna continue to grow, and just make sure you stay here in Harlingen.
We are. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a picture with the girls?
You're good, because you have tall people behind you. Okay, ready, one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Okay.
So Harlingen, if you have not made it out to Mafi, go and visit them downtown and try out their delicious bowls or shakes or juices, all homemade and delicious. All right, moving on.
Moving on to item five, citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor, we do have two city... Mayor, we do have two citizens that have signed up for public comments. We will begin with Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Reyes.
Mayor, Commissioner Raymond Reyes, 7069 TECAT. I apologize, the last time I was, you know, got tied up solving some other issues, unfortunately, but it worked out in the end for the best interest of everybody in that particular scenario. Basically, I think there's a lot of good things. I was always going around in Harlingen. Been around a long time, a long time, you know. Moved here in '76. And been going back and forth, of course. San Antonio, born and raised, but I have grandkids here, been here a long time. And I consider Harlingen my second home, if not the home, for a long time. Got multiple generations here. Have a lot of business interests here as well. And I've noticed we continue making positive progress. Of course, there's always some setbacks, but as long as we readjust and move forward, we're good to go. I believe the department's heads are doing the best they can with what they got. I just, from my conversations with certain departments, I think that in some instances, things can possibly be realigned or relooked at on the finance side to make sure these departments get exactly what they need to, you know, for the better good of the city, more importantly, for the citizens of Harlingen. I always believe and am very tedious about being on oversight. I know we do a lot of different things. I'm supposed to be retired, but not really because I do a lot of different things. I oversee a lot of different matters on multiple levels, government, business, the list goes on and on. But I love it. I really do because, you know, when people like to play, when the cat's away and they get caught, it's a totally different story and stuff. But I think, you know, we just need to make the right decisions for the right reasons. Remember that the Commission, the mayor, everybody in these key positions were elected or appointed to do the right thing for the right reasons and not to get caught up in all the nonsense because that's what I've been exposed to many, many times. My family's always been very well politically connected and I've seen a lot of interesting things transpire when they enter that realm and then wonder what happened when they know what happened, you know what I mean? They just lost their path. So as long as we stay on the path of progress for the citizens and the better good of the city, I think we're going to be okay. And I guess that's about it. I have to go and beat the buzzer. So I'm out of here and thank you very much. Y'all continue doing what you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Always a pleasure.
Next, Mayor, we have Mr. Jaime Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening. Nice to see you guys again. It's been a while. First of all, I want to thank Monsieur Pulvera for the memorial the other day. I think this is Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And as a veteran, appreciate that. I wish I could do more. I'm not there yet. Still a possibility. I did talk to my precinct representative, Mr. Morales, and I'm sure he's taking care of business. And I just want to see the committee work. That's... and congratulations to the wardies, who I think they already left. Congratulations and thank you guys for recognizing them. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And I did get your public comments and I'll ask Oscar if you can set up a time where you can meet with Mr. Rodriguez? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That concludes our Citizen Communication.
Okay.
Moving on to Item 6, Approval of Minutes. Item 6A, Regular Meeting of May 1st, 2024.
Is there a motion or is there any amendments?
Motion to supplement. May I have... Y'all have the page right in front of y'all. I'd motion to approve with that supplement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay.
Item 7, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Do we have anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through G?
Mayor, could I just ask that we change the date for the Margarita Festival from June 22nd to July 27th?
I make a motion to approve with that substitution.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Moving on to Item 8, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Report. Sir, do you have any other reports?
No, just to let the commission know that we plan to come up to the commission probably at the second meeting in July and present a report on drainage improvements that we've made so far, just so we can get a handle on what it is that Public Works and Chris Nisscrew have been doing along with the help from Oscar. That's all I have.
Item 8B, Staff Reports. Mayor, we have no reports to be closed at this time.
Fantastic. Okay.
Moving on to Item 9, Public Hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, we have no one signed up for public hearings.
Wonderful. Can you still read Item 9A?
Yes, ma'am. Item 9A, Public Hearing for a Special Use Permit, SUP, to allow an adult business microblading tattoo makeup studio in a general retail GR district located at 421 South 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite C, bearing a legal description of lots 22, 23, and the east 10 feet of Lot 24, Block 3, Windsor Place subdivision, applicant Tanya Cantu Salinas, Public and Planning and Development.
At this time, we will open the public hearing for Item 9A. Having no one here, having signed up to speak for or against, or no one present for or against, we will close the public hearing and move on to B.
Item B, Public Hearing Amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning Article 6, Section 111 through 140, Off-Street Parking, by amending the dimensions of the off-street parking spaces, Article 21, Section 111 through 582, Appendix B, Parking Isle Width Chart, by amending the length and maneuvering space of the parking spaces, Article 10, Sign Regulations, Sections 111 through 277C, Lighting, and Section 111 through 277D, Additional Sign Regulations for Billboards, by removing any reference to sign permits for animated signs only being issued for the conversion of existing signs to the said animated sign. Applicant City of Harlingen, Planning and Development.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. Having no one here that has signed up to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance and no one present to speak, we will close the public hearing.
Moving on to Item 10, Action Items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit, SUP, to allow an adult business microblading tattoo makeup studio in a general retail GR district located at 421 South 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite C, bearing a legal description of lots 22, 23, and the east 10 feet of Lot 24, Block 3, Windsor Place subdivision, applicant Tanya Cantu Salinas, Planning and Development.
Thank you. Mark, will you read the caption?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Tanya Cantu Salinas to allow an adult business microblading tattoo makeup studio in a general retail GR district located at 421 South Sunshine Strip, Suite C, bearing a legal description of lots 22, 23, and the east 10 feet of Lot 24, Block 3, Windsor Place subdivision.
On this one, I'll make a motion to approve. Subject, no changes I'd like of yet is if you recall, we did a microblading one off of the expressway off of the Mayor Rangeville. I think those had longer hours just to give the business owner more flexibility. I'll make a motion to approve, giving her more flexibility on hours.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, moving on to Item 10B, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading, Amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning Article 6, Section 111 through 140, Off-Street Parking, by amending the dimensions of the off-street parking spaces, Article 21, Section 111 through 582, Appendix B, Parking Isle Width Chart, by amending the length and maneuvering space of the parking spaces, Article 10, Sign Regulations, Section 111 through 277C, Lighting, and Sections 111 through 277D, Additional Sign Regulations for Billboards, by removing any reference to sign permits for animated signs only being used for the conversion of existing signs to the said animated sign. Applicant City of Harlingen, Planning and Development.
Thank you. Mark, will you read the caption?
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning Article 6, Section 111, 140, Off-Street Parking, by amending the dimensions of the off-street parking spaces, Article 21, Section 111, 582, Appendix B, Parking Isle Width Chart, by amending the length and maneuvering space of the parking spaces, Article 10, Sign Regulations, Section 111, 277C, Lighting, and for Section 111, 277D, Additional Sign Regulations for Billboards, by removing any reference to sign permits for animated signs only being issued for the conversion of existing signs to the said animated sign, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Give me a second. I have a question. Sorry to interrupt your speedy here. In reference to the width and the length of this parking spaces, I'm curious to find out how many people drive pickup trucks versus cars? Because what we're looking at is a combination of national versus state.
No, it's a city of Har... national versus a city of Harlingen.
Okay, so the thing is, most of us drive pickup trucks. If you're cutting the length, we're going to be in a pickle here. So with the exception of that, I'm all for it. Okay, you remove the length of this... Of this parking space, I'm good with that. But if you're going to leave it as is, I'm not in favor of that.
So Habiyad, what you're trying to do is make sure that ours mirrors the national standard?
Correct, which will save developers money on parking lots because it will be two less feet of asphalt. So it's less expensive for commercial developers, more green areas, so it's good for the environment, less runoff because you have less asphalt and less potential for flooding. Every... almost all the cities follow the national standards and the people park normally just fine.
So we have a big pickup truck. We can still park.
If you have a big pickup truck, you're going to struggle no matter...
If you have a duly or you have something, yeah.
You're going to struggle no matter what.
That's when you go in your wife's car with...
The truck's bigger than mine. I'm kidding.
Well, Eric's truck is big and we take, you know... But that is the standard, the national standard, and most of... In the RDB, other cities in neighboring and the great state of Texas where everybody has a...
It's national. Most old designers always go with the national standard. So we have to tell them, no, Harlingen is different. So that results in more asphalt, less green areas, more runoff, more expense.
I was just telling...
They can always do more. These are the minimum.
Right.
But they can do more if they want to.
And this is considered pro-development, so.
Right. I was telling Gabe that it's really difficult right now because the cost for building of parking lots has really gone up substantially. I think almost double now that with materials and everything, so it's difficult. And if we want to continue to grow, we need to make these concessions. And I don't necessarily think it's a concession. It's really doing what...
Everybody else is...
What it's doing across the country.
Yes.
So did you have any other questions, Commissioner Morales?
No.
All right. There was a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries?
Item 10C, Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on Second and Final Reading for a Special Use Permit, SUP, to allow a storage building detached garage greater than 144 square feet in a planned development PD district located at 321 Seminole Court, bearing a legal description of lots 6 through 7, Block 3, Treasure Hills Country Club subdivision, applicant Ronald Richardson, Planning and Development.
Mark?
Yes. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a planned development PD district located at 321 Seminole Court, bearing a legal description of lots 6 and 7, Lot 3, Treasure Hills Country Club subdivision, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Moving on to Item 10D, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Selection of Freezer Nichols, Inc. under RFQ Number 2024-09, Professional Planning Services for a New Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance update and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with a selected firm. Applicant City of Harlingen, Planning and Development.
If I could just remind the commission that we did receive a $300,000 grant for this process. That is to include not just the comprehensive plan but the rezoning ordinance or zoning ordinance for the city and it will be included in the comprehensive plan once it's completed.
Is there any discussion or motion?
Yeah, just one thing is when I looked over our 2016 plan and there was a couple of things in there that we didn't do, which one, there's three. One was we didn't do a master parks plan. I don't think we did. Another one we did not do is we didn't do a downtown parking study, right? Because it says it was going to be 45...
We did do a parks study.
Downtown parking?
Not for downtown parking, no.
Okay.
But it was a parks...
Okay.
The first one you mentioned was a parks study, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did do that.
And then if... it also mentioned that we did not do, there is a downtown master plan. So we were talking about last week about that and all that. I looked over all of the applications. They all... Whichever company this commission decides, they all actually have experience doing that. And I would ask that we include that. Looking at our RFP, if you look under Section 3G, it actually allows us to add on those extra studies that we would like to do.
The one thing that we did do that the comprehensive plan that we have now did call for was to adopt a mixed use for downtown. That took several months because of the fire code required for separation between business and a residential. We finally got through that working with the fire marshal at the time and were able to establish mixed use for the downtown. That was one of the biggest things for the comp plan that it called for the downtown area. So we did do that. We also did an internal parking analysis for the parking spaces available to the downtown. But that was all we did. That wasn't the full-blown downtown improvement study.
Yeah, the one I'm looking at, if you go onto the city's website, there's the Harlingen Comprehensive Plan and it talks about the priority list. And so going off the priority list, I know there's those three... Two things at least hadn't been done and I would like, based on our last conversation, for us to tack on that parks master plan.
Okay, I'd like to point out that the priority list came from the city commission. After the comp plan was completed, we had a retreat where the commission prioritized all those projects. So I'd like to do that once this plan is completed. Go back and come up with a priority list from this commission on what they want staff to focus on. And those were the projects that we actually started with. So once we have a completed comprehensive plan, I'd like to continue that process and do something similar in that regard to have a priority list that's established by the city commission based on the comprehensive plan that we have given to us.
How long will that take, Gabe? How long will that take, Gabe?
The comprehensive plan, probably around six to nine months.
It's 12 months in the RFQ, it's 12 months.
Yeah.
But is that, will it take the 12 months?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It depends how much outreach you want to do, and I think you want to do a lot.
Okay, so 12, where are we? What is July?
Well, we're at the end of June.
12 months from the signing of the contract.
So potentially, when would we be having this retreat?
Oh, after we've accepted the, we'd have to accept the comp plan here at the city council.
Like summer of next year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That sounds good. All right, so is there any other discussion? I think that those are, those are good points, and I think the commission has gone in that direction anyhow with previous discussions. If, was there a motion, or?
Yeah, I'd make, oh, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that.
I do have a question. Out of these 20 people or 20 firms that you reached out to, you only had three that responded?
Correct.
And there's only one from Harlingen, right? Or maybe?
Yes, the firm that is top ranked by the committee, they're basing for word, but they have an office here in Harlingen.
I was going to say, if they have an office.
And Freezing Nichols has an office in Harlingen.
Yes, that's what I referred to.
Yeah, in the downtown.
That's it?
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the top selection, as well as to include, according to Gabe, the master plan for parks, master plan for downtown, and then a master downtown parking study as well, as allowable.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we can try to expedite, do as quickly as possible, so then we can be looking at August in doing those priorities, because that'll be, I was thinking if it could be done prior to budget, but it can't, right, based on?
The next phase is to negotiate a contract. Mr. Gonzalez will be doing that, and after that is, let's get to work.
Just, I'd like to point out, though, that the RFP did not include those three.
Correct, that's why I said, if you look at Section 3, Article, or Section 3G, I can send you exactly what I'm looking at, Mark, so that you can see for yourself.
I think he's talking about cost.
Yeah, well, even time, they may have to go back to their group and figure out what that additional, those three studies will cost, and then give us a.
Tom, we don't want any more time, though.
I agree with you.
12 months is sufficient. I always think, you say 12 months, they should do nine, but.
It's a big firm, and they have a lot of staff.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. Did we vote?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't vote. We don't have a motion.
Okay. We've got a second by Commissioner Mike Mesmer. We did vote, yes. Oh, okay.
You did?
Yeah, we got a motion. Commissioner Lopez.
Was there a vote?
Yeah.
Five of them.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
I'm going to get you a Mophie drink before my.
I've got the coffee. It's been a long day.
Okay, you know, it's been a long week already.
Yes, yes, yes.
With the storm coming, so.
All right, blame Alberto.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to authorize the Harlingen Police Department to purchase one 2024 Ford Explorer XLT from the federal forfeiture treasury account, Police Department.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
I have a question. Sorry. I know this is a one-minute question here, 30 seconds. Gabe, on something like this, as long as it's, I want to make sure that I understand this, as long as it's tips or taspy or whatever, you don't have to do any other bids or quotes, correct?
That's correct.
Make a call, it's under them, that's it.
That's, that's correct. Yes, was that, your only question, that if that's what we can do? The answer is yes.
Yeah, I just want to verify, because this is not the first one, I'm sure it's not going to be the second one.
And there are several agencies that.
The thing is, as long as they're with one of these buy boards, you don't have to do any other bids.
Correct, that's correct.
That's it.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's why they have buy boards.
Yeah, but you can't, so you don't do any quotes or bids within the buy boards?
No.
I think we've had this discussion before on the commission, so is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 11, board appointments. Specifically, appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
Fede Guillen reappointed to the downtown improvement board.
It'll be Debbie Reyes to the Community Development Advisory Board.
I don't have any, none.
None. I want to reappoint Ida Villarreal to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board.
Speaking of that, now that you all have appointed commissioners, is there a meeting scheduled?
We, I think we have one for Monday. Amanda, were we able to get a quorum?
On what?
On the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board?
We had 10, because you wanted 10.
No, I wanted at least 10. We get more, it's better.
Well, we got nine, we had 10, but one said no.
I'll do it.
Call back. You'll do it, sir?
Yeah, I'm on the board, so I'll get on. Can you be there Monday?
Probably, what time? Same time, 17:30?
What is, is that 5:30?
I'm sorry, I had to translate that.
17:30 in my world.
And all Marines will be there.
Yes, that's correct, 17:30.
I'm going to give him a class on how to tell someone.
Fantastic, okay, good idea then.
Okay, so then we have a quorum. We'll post tomorrow. I have the agenda ready and everything, so, so I did send you another draft?
Yes, you sent me another one?
Yes.
Okay, I sent you one that was approved, so I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
Can I see it, the draft, please?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Can you send it to Commissioner Lopez?
And Commissioner Mansley.
Yes, I will.
And whoever the other guy is.
Now, we already got bumped off.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. I thought, I wouldn't, I didn't remember who.
Temporary.
They took Commissioner, that is.
All good.
Yeah.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item 12, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Item 12A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 1 and 2, Attorney Consultation, Section 551.072, regarding 8377 properties. City manager.
Should I go to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is now 6:30 PM, and we will retire to executive session and be out shortly. Thank you. Let's see, the time is now 6:39 PM, and we are out of executive session. Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A as discussed in executive session.